Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Williamsburg City Council meeting of August 12th. Kalika, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Pons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Here.
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Thank you. You all have in your packets the minutes from June 10th and July 8th. Are there any corrections or amendments? Hearing none? Is there motion?
I move that the minutes be accepted.
Second.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Okay. So next we have matters of special privilege, and we have three today, so I'll come to the podium. First, we have Ms. Toni Bishop. Would you like to come forward? Howdy. Toni has worked faithfully and effectively and served the Williamsburg public for nearly three years. As the city's assistant to the Public Works Director, she is responsible for managing the front office of the department. She is on the front line daily, helping with a wide range of public services, including refuse and recycling collections, street and sidewalk maintenance, cemetery operations, and water service, just to name a few. She dispatches public works field personnel to respond to citizens' requests and makes requests and needs, and making sure that nothing falls through the cracks. Toni is a quick study who hit the ground running from day one. She is excellent in dealing with the city residents, and even in the most difficult times. Toni compiles accurate monthly performance data and manages time sheets for the department's 50 employees. She is quick to volunteer to serve on several independent interdepartmental teams. Toni leads the annual mayor's blood drive, in which for the last three years, we've won for localities our size. She is a solid employee with all the goods: pleasant, great attitude, dedicated, knowledgeable, and a role model for all city employees. Toni Bishop is hereby recognized with pleasure for her dedication to excellence in keeping the best traditions of public service for the city of Williamsburg. So we have a little plaque for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Safety words?
Thank you.
This is for you as well.
Murphy works.
Next, we have Roy Girardi. Welcome, sir. Roy Girardi has served the citizens of Williamsburg with dedication and compassion since 2010 as the outreach coordinator for the Human Service Department. Roy is responsible for meeting with hundreds of people each year who are in crisis and oftentimes having their worst day. He listens as people share their stories of being faced with homelessness, food insecurity, how to pay their bills, or to provide even childcare. Each day, Roy tackles challenges and guides residents in navigating resources and services. He finds creative solutions to implement important situations. Roy is practical, honest, and has a true heart for people in service. Roy is a liaison to nonprofit agencies, faith-based organizations, and coordinates emergency assistance and service for all city residents. He has developed and expanded our partnership and strengthened collaborations among agencies. Roy is also a mentor to citizens residing in transitional housing, helping families transition from homelessness to permanent housing. During the pandemic, Roy led a shelter program at the Governor's Inn to ensure individuals had a safe place to sleep at night. Roy has also coordinated several grant programs, which have secured funding and housing for food assistance to residents. Roy Girardi is an exemplary city employee who embraces the Williamsburg way. Roy is hereby recognized for his dedication in keeping with the best traditions of the public service of the city of Williamsburg. So thank you very much. This for you as well. Roy? Oh, yeah, please. Thank you.
I just want to say briefly, I'm very humbled to receive this award and to be honored in such a way. I was looking at the plaque in the lobby of previous recipients, and it's such a distinguished, amazing group of people. So I'm truly humbled. I just want to thank, first of all, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He's changed my life. It's still a work in progress, but He's changing my life. Secondly, I just want to give thanks to the leadership of the city. When I came here, Peter Wallantich was my director, and Jack Tuttle was the city manager, and now under Wendy's leadership and Drew's. It makes such a difference to work under a leadership that has character, integrity, and is wise, and it's just a huge blessing, so thank you. And lastly, I just want to thank my colleagues in human services. They're a tremendous group of people, and they truly spur me on to excellence, and their dedication inspires me, so thank you very much.
And last but not least, we have Ciara Fenske. Welcome, Ciara. It's good to see you again, as always. The COVID pandemic thrust unparalleled public health crisis upon Williamsburg community and around the world. In January 2021, Senior firefighter medic Ciara Fenske was promoted to the city's first mobile integrated health coordinator. Almost immediately, she was tasked to co-manage the Greater Williamsburg Vaccination Clinic in conjunction with our partners in James City County. With the goal of reducing the impact of the pandemic, she was tasked with getting as many people vaccinated as possible. As a clinic co-manager, Ciara was integral in leading the city's efforts to plan, implement, and execute the day-to-day operations of the clinic. The relationship and support network that she developed, as well as her innovation and commitment, were critical to the success of the clinics. Ultimately, we vaccinated, put in 22,840 shots. Those small feet. In addition to running the Greater Williamsburg Vaccination Clinic, Ciara helped teach the department's VCU pandemic program and has taken our MIH program to new levels, providing higher standards of care to the citizens of Williamsburg. Ciara Fenske is an exemplary city employee and vital to the success of the Williamsburg Fire Department and the success of the Greater Williamsburg Vaccine Clinic. She is hereby recognized for her dedication and excellence in keeping the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg. So we have a plaque for you as well.
Roy said it all.
Thank you so much. So that's the fun part. Now to the public hearings. So first, we have PCR number 21-005, 21 Comprehensive Plan.
Yes. Mayor Pons and members of city council, on Monday, we had the background presentation for the comprehensive plan. I don't have anything else to add, other than I know Councilman Maslin asked about the Spotswood, and that's located in Chapter 5, Neighborhoods, pages 21 and 22, if you want to look at that section in the plan, and that section was not changed from the current plan. So therefore, staff's recommendation is to hold the public hearing, and we can address any concerns from the public and from council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before we go to the public hearing, does any member of council have any questions for Ms. Murphy?
Carolyn, if you don't mind, I had two quick questions, maybe three. One was in 10-7, the school enrollment. I'm assuming that our school enrollment was down in 2020, 2020, 21 because of the pandemic and people holding kids out of school, which was...
That's correct.
It was just something that jumped out. It was a little more fluctuation than normal. And then in 12, and I know this wasn't your data, but in 12-4, I was curious if it's on, yeah, on 12-4, that chart for the transportation study?
Right.
And we almost had an equal balance of increase and decrease weekday traffic volume in all the categories listed from 2015 to 2019, but then in 2040, all but one, they projected the increase in quite a few of them, very significant numbers.
Right, and I think that corresponds to the increase in population that's projected in 2021, 2020, 2040?
Yeah, I just...
But yes, this chart comes from the VDOT, so...
Yeah, the one that caught my eye was, I think, the daily traffic volume was 2,400, and they project 9,000 in 2040. So it was just some numbers. Again, I know that wasn't your data, it came from the study, but if anybody else is looking at it, those numbers, for me, that they appear high. I'm not involved in the study, but they just appeared high. And then the last one was, I saw one thing in transportation, and this may be from Mr. Small and Mr. Clayton. I saw there's going to be, to look at possibly aligning Trayburn Drive with Compton, that just to have a traffic signal for that Compton intersection?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That's to align that so that we can pull the current traffic light further down away from the other, and also align with the traffic that's coming out of Compton Drive.
Okay, awesome. That's all I had. Thanks.
Maslin?
What questions?
So we know that the next one we'd be working on in five years. Once this gets approved, and I know everybody's anxious to publish it with a date, are you going to just put this on the shelf, or is it a live document that we could actually continue to work on certain sections that maybe we feel haven't been completed yet?
Well, once it's adopted, then the implementation comes in. So then you go through the implementation for the next two or three or four years, however long it takes you to get through that and start those items in the last chapter. And some of that is zoning ordinance changes, some of it is looking at the studies, maybe doing additional studies. So it's always used in every rezoning, in all the cases that come to staff from developers, and those individuals are always, the comp plan is one of the first things you point to when you're talking about what the potential is. So it's not something that just sits on the shelf.
So later in this meeting, we'll be talking about neighborhood balance. Could you explain that there was a lot of work done by the Neighborhood Balance Committee? How was that presented to the planning commission, and how was that referenced in this comp plan?
Well, I think the Neighborhood Balance Committee, it's referenced in the comp plan in that the neighborhood section, it says to look at the recommendations of the committee, and then implement and do studies on any of those. So we were past that chapter and way past that by the time the Neighborhood Balance Committee had done their work. So the planning commission looked at that, based on that committee's recommendation, we should then look at what we want to implement from that and start that process. So there is a section, I believe in the neighborhood section, that says, "Look at the Neighborhood Balance Committee recommendations and implement or bring forward ordinance changes or policy decisions based on council" for that committee appointment and recommendations.
That would like enable the action plan there?
Uh huh. Yeah, that's what you look when, at the end of each of the chapters, that's why we put the recommendations. And then we sort of compile them also a little bit differently in the implementation section, because we kept sort of the same format that we currently have. But yes, I mean, there's a bunch of them in there that doesn't list everything that every committee ever says, but it says, "Based on that committee's study and recommendation and council action." I mean, council can say, as you just did with the four-person moratorium that's coming up, you want to study that and look at that and bring it forward to council. So there's a lot of those in this comp plan.
So under Community Character, Chapter 4, talking about Jamestown Road, it says, "The maintenance of William &amp; Mary properties on the south side of Jamestown Road from Carey Street to the undergraduate admissions office should be improved since their physical condition detracts from the rest of the corridor's well-maintained character."
Right.
Was that in the previous one, or is that new?
That's in the previous one and in this one.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with William &amp; Mary in terms of action on that?
I think some of the buildings were, at least one building was torn down, and I think the William &amp; Mary is looking at relocating some of the offices and see if those buildings can possibly go back to another use.
And then on the other side of the campus, Ironbound Road, there was a recommendation that Ironbound Road be widened from Long Hill to Dupue.
Yes.
Where does that project stand?
I think that's in two years. Is it two years? Yeah, so I think it's completion in two years. Yeah.
Okay. Now, the William &amp; Mary buildings to the right of that, which when I was a student were James Blair Terrace, graduate housing, I believe, they're actually being torn down right now. Did the comp plan have any recommendations in terms of what would go in that area?
That's state property, and the city doesn't regulate state property, so...
Yeah, I understand that. There are recommendations in terms of what happens with state property on Jamestown Road, but...
Well, some of those are owned by the...
Foundation?
Foundation, yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
And I don't have any specific questions at this time. I did want to piggyback onto Mr. Maslin's question about the Neighborhood Balance and also the Affordable Housing Task Force, and it's actually on page 534 at the end of the Neighborhood chapter, and it talks about considering implementing the short-term and long-term recommendations for both committees. So I think that provides that. So as I say, nothing more at this time.
And we had similar stuff for the vibrancy study.
Right.
And I have no particular questions today either, Carolyn, except maybe a point of clarification that the comp plan, as substantial as it is, is just up for public hearing today and will officially be voted on in September's meeting. So there will be additional time for public comment, should anyone want to come then as well.
So with that, I don't have any questions either, Ms. Murphy. We will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward to speak on this matter, please come forward and state your name and address. And if you don't know that I have any speaker's card on that, like everybody else has, something else to talk about. Okay, seeing no one come forward, as Mr. Rogers said, we're scheduled to vote on this in September. If there's no reason why we couldn't do it today unless somebody felt compelled not to, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of debate, but with that, we will hold off till September. Take that up at the next month. So again, if anybody wants to come forward and speak on that next month, they're welcome to do that. Or contact staff or city council members between now and September.
And just a reminder that it is on the website in its entirety, in the same format that we have in our book, so that anyone can pull it up and take a look at it, correct, Ms. Murphy?
That's correct. It's on there as one complete document, if you want to print 252 pages. It's also in there by chapter, if you just want to look by chapter and just print that chapter, so they're both ways.
Okay. So that takes us now to PCR number 21-003, Zoning Tax Amendment to Article 5, 4, Supplemental District Regulations, Section 21-619, The Zoning Ordinance Pertaining to the Temporary Moratorium of the Issuance of New Certificates of Occupancy for Increased Residential Occupancy in Single-Family Detached Dwellings in the City. Ms. Murphy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pons and members of city council. City council instructed staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to allow for a three-year moratorium to assess the effects of additional occupancy and the future impacts of additional student-oriented housing construction in Williamsburg based on a recommendation of the Neighborhood Balance Committee. One of city council's goals was to establish the committee that was charged with evaluating the balance of rental and owner-occupied homes in Williamsburg neighborhoods and identifying strategies to improve the balance. The committee included 20 members representing landlords, students, William &amp; Mary, homeowner, city staff, which met over 15 months. The process resulted in 27 concepts that could impact housing in the city. Each member of the committee ranked the concepts based on their preference in long-term and short-term lists. One concept the committee recommended was limiting the four-person allowance. Some neighborhood representatives argued to abolish the allowance, and other representatives sought to institute a moratorium on the four-person permits until more is certain regarding the housing market after the addition of the student-oriented residential units at Midtown Road. We currently have 38 homes approved for four individuals since 2010. And basically, on the overhead, these are the four-person rentals adjacent to the Jamestown Road area, which consist of 22 dwellings, and you can see those are highlighted in the dark blue on the map. This is the Richmond Road neighborhoods. We have 15 in that area, and again, those are highlighted in the dark blue or purple on the map. And we have one that's in the Pine Crest neighborhood at 701 Monumental Avenue. These homes require meeting the criteria in the zoning ordinance, such as yearly inspection by the zoning administrator, a copy of the lease, a zoning certificate of occupancy being issued for their use as a four-person rental. Other three-person rentals in the city are allowed by right in the zoning ordinance and require a rental inspection every four years if they are in one of the four housing conservation districts in the city. The zoning administrator does not accompany the code compliance inspectors during these rental inspections, which are for the limited purpose of confirming compliance with building code. I attached in your packets these maps in the four-person list. The ordinance change is written to currently allow approved four-person rentals to remain so long as they stay current and continue to meet ordinance requirements. The permit runs with the property. If a property is sold, the four-person rental will be transferred to the new owner provided the owner continues to meet all the requirements of the ordinance during the remaining permitted period. No new four-person rentals would be allowed if city council approves a three-year moratorium. Planning Commission held their public hearing at the July meeting. Six individuals spoke. You have copies in your packet of the Planning Commission draft minutes. By vote 3202, the Planning Commission did not recommend a city council approval of Prop. 21-07 to place a three-year moratorium on the new four-person rentals. With that, that's all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Carolyn, can you just talk to us just a little bit about what the process was some years ago that got us to ultimately making the decision to allow for four persons? I was on that committee as the chairman of the Planning Commission. If you can just kind of give us a synopsis of how we got to that point and the efforts that went into drafting this ordinance?
I think we, back then, that committee was basically handled by Reed, but if I remember correctly, Planning Commission had a committee that looked at the process and came up with some recommendations, and Planning Commission, at the end of the process, did not want to recommend the four-person in neighborhoods. They were basically, if I remember correctly, was too allowed in the B1 district, I remember. Basically, it was a time where the thought was going from three to four. In homes especially, there was a lot of discussion on the size of the home. It started out, I think, at 1,200 square feet, talked about 1,500 square feet, and ended up at 2,000 square feet. And all the criteria, there was a host of criteria that's currently in the ordinance as to what you had to do to meet that, parking, smoke detectors, having the ability for the zoning administrator to do the inspections yearly, with being able to revoke the four-person if a home did not meet ordinance requirements or had so many violations, and we actually did revoke one since we've been doing it. So there was a host of, it was a time, I think, when we're trying to look at, trying to, how do we handle the more houses? Would put one more into a house better than having more rentals? So there was a big, long discussion, and I think you probably can look at the minutes so that you can get a better idea of what that was.
I don't have any other questions. Vice Mayor?
Ms. Murphy, could you just, over the last few years, how many applications there have been for four-person?
I have to look on my list, but...
Not specifically, but the numbers certainly haven't been, have declined since the initial onset of the four-person.
I have a list here. Let me look at that. I know in the last year, we, the last three or four years, we probably had four or five. I can think of Lafayette Street. I can think this year, we had the Richmond Road Casey property. We had this one on Monumental Avenue this year. We had the 333 Burns Lane this year. If I look at the lit map, I can probably tell you better than looking at it. Those have all been for a while. But I can look at the, get back to you by the end of the public hearing, the exact list of them. I thought I included it.
That's fine. Thank you. That's all I had.
Maslin?
There was a suggestion that a fall work session be undertaken by the Planning Commission to look at a holistic approach to neighborhood issues, and I think the city council should endorse that. One of the areas where there seemed to be a lot of surprises was that somebody who has the four-person certification and then sells their property, it automatically conveys to the new owner. And I think some of the discussion was, well, maybe the new owner should apply again. Even though a lot of the requirements are characteristic of the house, it would make sure that the new owner is familiar with all the requirements. Also, thinking that we've got a landlord certification program that will be designed soon, we could make that a requirement of the four-person certifications. Is it feasible that maybe we could have that, the Planning Commission could have that work session in September?
I can't answer that. It's up to the commission, Planning Commission chair, but...
And the chair was recommending it.
Yeah, but...
So, yeah.
To schedule a meeting, it depends on if they're available, because they're typically not a work session unless we schedule one, and especially after the comp plan, when we've had, I think, 32 over the last three years. But it's up to the commission members, and if council wants to recommend that. I would say on the landlord requirement, that usually the landlord ends up knowing what the requirements are, because when it changes ownership between the inspection in September and the new inspection, and emails that go out to the landlords, we check to make sure the ownership hasn't changed on the website. And if it has, we contact the new landlord, because they have to give us the lease for the new year. And usually, the landlords meet us at the site and go through a lot of them with us. And usually, the landlords meet us at the site and go through a lot of them with us and get their regulations. So Heather's pretty good about giving landlords the information on their programs, so...
One question on the proposed ordinance. If during this moratorium, somebody who has the four-person rental certification loses that, is the, is this affecting their ability to get it back? Or how does that work now? And how would it work?
I would think if you lose it, then you've lost it, and you can't get it back unless council allows the moratorium to run its course and makes a decision, whatever that decision may be. Is that correct, Chris?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay, so that's a good, that's a good clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. So, a couple things. Mr. Dent asked about the number of rentals over the past couple of years, and I had taken your chart and some information that had been provided earlier. And out of the 22, and this is what I found, out of the 22 on Jamestown Road, five of them were converted within two years of the ordinance, so that I think part of the intent was that, and this will get around to a question, that they were, you know, planning on, they already had them in their possession and then converted them. And then the rest, the 16 have been since 2013, and actually, there's been 10 since 2017 on Jamestown Road. So, almost half of them on Jamestown Road have been within the past five years. And then on Richmond Road, of the 15 there, four of them were within the first two years after the allowance, with 11 of them since 2013, and five of them in the past five years. And then, as you mentioned, the one on Monumental is new this year. And we talked about, so, as far as, I've looked at, you know, there's the chart of the checklist, and it says in here that someone could be, have it revoked if there's repeated complaints or violations. And I know of one house that has had their four-person revoked. Have there been any others that have been revoked? And that, and what does that one that gets revoked have to do?
Has to wait four years and then reapply.
And, and so it's the same, so if they already had the square footage and the parking from the first go-around, then they're good to go, basically, for the second go-around. And, and it says, repeated founded complaints or violations of the city code. Has that, the complaint's typically been about behavior issues, noise complaints?
We, noise complaints was a major one for the one that got revoked. Also, a lot of trash complaints, those types of things, parking complaints. We look at a whole host of city code sections. I mean, if there's a trash complaint, does that weigh as heavy as a noise complaint? Not to staff, but if, especially if they take care of it immediately upon talking to the landlord. And that's one of the beauties of the four-person ordinance is that we have the landlord's names and contacts. And that, usually when we contact them by email or by phone, it's usually taken care of pretty quickly. We don't always have that with other properties. The ones in the rental inspection districts are, we have the information, but the ones that aren't in the rental inspection districts, we have to go through the letter-writing process for those.
Well, and I remember when I was on the NRC, we would often get a report on noise complaints. And if I remember correctly, there would be noise complaints on both three-person and four-person. And wouldn't you say that over the past few years, my view, those diminished with the community policing that Chief Dunn put into effect and some of the other programs? And also for you contacting, contacting...
Correct, and you've got to remember that the noise complaints are just not for these areas.
Right.
There are a lot of complaints were in other areas of the city also that, and staff tried to contact. If, I got a list from the police department, I tried to email or contact the individuals to let them know.
So, you're right. It was not only just in four-person versus three-person, it was over the entire city.
And other apartment complexes, other neighborhoods. So it's not just, I don't want people to get the impression that the noise complaints only happened in the downtown neighborhoods.
And it was referenced about the transfer, and when you and I talked, you were saying that a lot of this is very objective, that, you know, when there's like the checklist and with the, and so I was just curious about, about the transfer and what would happen to the students if you said, okay, an owner sells the property and there's four students today, but a new owner might not have approval right away for when they would purchase it.
One of the main things, I think, the four-person, the way it's written, is that it does not give staff discretion. If you meet the requirements in the ordinance, you're supposed to get that certificate, basically. And I think that's the reason why it's written that way. And like I mentioned, the landlords, if you revoke it in the middle of a year or so forth, when they've got their approval and you've got four individuals in a house, what do you do with the extra person? I think that's why we ran it with the property and so forth, because it's easy to, to every year, like I said, it's easy for us to get the new landlord in, in compliance, because usually we get the property transfers every month, and if I notice someone has changed, we contact them immediately and let them know that this is a four-person house, here are the rules and regulations. And 98% of the time, they already know that, because the current owner...
Right.
...is passing that on to them. And I can't remember of many of them switching ownership in the 11 years that this has been going on.
Yeah.
Haven't looked at that, but I can't remember of many. I know one's up for sale right now, but I can't remember many of them being transferred.
So, Ms. Ramsey, when City Council adopted the ordinance to begin with, we discussed how to do it pretty extensively. And City Council wanted it to be a very objective standard, because they wanted the staff to be able to administer this program and not to come back to the Board of Zoning Appeals as a special exception, or to the City Council as a special use permit for each one of these houses. The law in Virginia does not allow the staff to exercise the City Council's discretion legislatively, and so the objective standards are there for a reason. Someone takes possession of one of these houses, they take it subject to whatever leases are currently imposed on the house. And so they would have those four tenants, and it would have to honor those leases.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I don't have any other questions.
Carolyn, I understand that after the rule was in place, I believe it was three years, it might have been a number, it was then reviewed and changed to an extent. Are you familiar with that process when it was reviewed around 2010?
It didn't, it, it got adopted in December, and then I believe in April, two items in the original got removed. One was on electrical, and I can't remember what the, I think it was the site plan, the plot plan. But two items got removed from the initial, but it was pretty close. It was December, and I think it was April. I can look at the minutes on my file there, but it was not three years down the road. It was like three or four months down the road.
Okay, understood.
And it wasn't even really that, because if you think of the process that we had to go through, the change of ordinance, it's a three-month process, so immediately, an ordinance change was coming through like in early February...
Okay.
...to have a April approval.
How do inspections differ for a home that is rented that has three people in it as opposed to those that have the four-person allowance?
The one that has three people in it is inspected by the code compliance office, and the zoning individuals is not allowed to go in it. It's just basically property maintenance, life and safety issues. The four-person gets the building code inspection every four years, plus it gets the individual inspection every year by the zoning administrator. So the zoning administrator goes to each of the properties. She sends out, as a matter of fact, the emails are going out Monday, for the individuals to start sending us the leases. We have a few, but not all of them, and to start scheduling the inspections. We schedule most of the inspections in September. There might be a few that carry over into October. Sometimes it's like a swim team or something, and they all can't be there at the same time. So sometimes they might be the first week of October or something like that. But we, we do those inspections pretty regularly.
Pretty frequently, it sounds like.
It's, and the reason we want those at that time is because we want the individuals that are in the house there, so that we can go over the renter's guide, we go over how to be a good neighbor, we go over the noise complaints, making sure you pick up trash, making sure you take your trash cans back, making sure they know, don't disconnect your smoke detector, you know, that's there for a reason. Even though the inspections come through every four years, sometimes we can go in and say, they're there for a reason. And we just, really an education, because a lot of individuals, it's the first time they've been in a home, and they're learning their ropes of what it requires to be in your own dwelling with a yard and mowing the grass and those kinds of things.
So, one, one additional thing, the rental inspection is provided for in the Code of Virginia. It's explicitly authorized. The inspections that the city does under this program are voluntary, because no one is obligated to be part of this program. But they agree to give up the right to not be inspected on an annual basis, and they agree to comply with the provisions of the ordinance in exchange for the additional person.
Okay.
And that's why we have the authority to do this. We would not have the authority to do this on normal three-person houses.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Carolyn. Those are all my questions.
I have two, two questions spurred by Mr. Rogers. You mentioned that you go through the, meet with the tenants and provide them the rentals guide and go over that, but all other houses still receive the rental guide in the mail. Is that correct?
Yeah, the rental guide in all four districts. The housing districts, we know the rental properties, and we keep a list, because codes also does the inspections of those. Usually, the first week of September, we mail out just under 500 rental guides to everyone that we show in our database as a rental property.
And, and that guide's updated as...
Every year.
Things change every year and things like that.
Yep, the new one this year. I just found the information on tenant landlord regulations in the state, so we added that link to it. So that's, each year, we're trying to make it a little bit better.
Yeah, and the information, the links that you put on the website make it very helpful as well. And then you mentioned you do the zoning inspection every year. If there are any complaints, are there any spot inspections? If there are no complaints, are there any spot inspections during the year?
During the year, if we get complaints, the zoning administrator goes and talks to not only the tenants usually, but also the landlord, and we usually get in and see the house. For the, that's just typical. For the three-person, if we get a complaint, it's the same type of thing. The burden of proof is on the city to prove that more individuals live in the house.
But if you don't get any complaints...
Don't get any complaints, normally we don't go out and knock on the door and say, "I want to do a bed check."
So things can change afterwards.
Things can change.
And additional inspections are authorized by the code if a complaint is received.
Under the four-person, right?
Under the four-person.
Yes.
But also under a three, three-person if there are complaints?
No.
They won't, they, they can refuse to not let us in. Most individuals will schedule an inspection, and we get to go in, and typically, there's no violation.
Right.
But they could refuse to let us in, and we have, the burden of proof is on the city to prove that more individuals live in the house. And as you know, the definition of a visitor in the city is 30 days or less, so we have to prove that someone's been living there for more than 30 days, the same individual.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to double-check on the inspections after the initial one was done. So, thank you.
Okay, no more questions. We'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward, state your name and address. I do have a few speakers' cards. The first is Marley Davis.
I speak from here.
Please come to the podium up front. Welcome, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. It's like this, speaking to her, do you?
Yes, ma'am.
And can the rest of you hear me okay? Great.
Yeah, there's, it's amplified through the room.
Okay, thanks. I have, I live at 302 Indian Springs Road and have since 1983. Prior to that, I lived on Griffin Avenue. So I've, have a real sense of our community and, of course, love it. I'm concerned about two particular issues on Indian Springs. One is this rental issue, because as I understand it, it's voluntary that the landlord tells you that he or she has a rental building. Is that correct?
So, Ms. Davis, this is an opportunity for you to address council. We don't, we don't entertain questions necessarily.
You don't know that, okay.
Yeah, but we'd be happy to talk with you after if you have specific questions.
Okay. So, I have found that some of my student rental neighbors, there are certainly four people living in a smaller house, and the problem is, each of them has a pretty good-sized car, as well as having a permit to have gas cars. So parking is a problem in terms of the structure of the streets, which are curved and small. So I'm concerned about that. The other issue that I have a concern about is to cull the herd of deer. We have so many that it's truly a problem in terms of driving, and also in terms of coming into the, you know, intimate garden and all. So those are my two issues. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Next speaker card I have is Chris Gares. Just state your name and address for the record, please, and limit your comments to about five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gares. I live at 325 Burns Lane. My wife and children and I moved to Burns Lane after living in the county for about 24 years. We've been in Williamsburg now for the past six years. Moving to a close-in neighborhood was a longtime dream of ours, and we worked extraordinarily hard to make it happen for our family. Sadly, we've come to learn in very real and personal ways about the hidden costs of living in the unprotected downtown neighborhoods. We're here today to urge you to support the moratorium on the four-person exception. Last week, I emailed to each of you a note from us, sharing with you our reasoning for why we think this is an intelligent and fair-minded step to take as we consider it a larger issue of balanced neighborhoods. I appreciate that a couple of you responded and took time to talk with us as well about that. It gives us hope for the deliberation today and the outcome of the deliberation. I want to share just a few points here this afternoon. One is, first of all, with a moratorium, no one is harmed. It's a temporary moratorium to pause, reflect on this, to study it, and to make a wise decision moving forward, a decision that's sustainable. Secondly, this was posited as an experiment initially, and so 10 years in seems to me a reasonable time to stop and look at what we've learned from the experiment that was undertaken. The best thing about the four-person exception Carolyn has alluded to already, Chris's comments, I think she alluded to it as well, is that we have procedures in place to protect the interests of students and residents alike. I would even say it, it protects the reputation of many landlords, and that's excellent. We don't want to lose those protections. Those are good to have. But on the other hand, we want to try to have those protections for the three-person -- But on the other hand, we want to try to have those protections for the three-person rentals as well. Because of course, when we talk about four-person exceptions, we have to do it in the context, not only the blue markings out there, but the striped ones as well. Though there's a good deal to like about those protections that are in place for students and for residents. But it's not the, the four-person exception itself that's the key. Really, it's the robustness of the rental inspection program. Secondly, the most negative unintended consequence of the four-person exception is that it incentivizes investors to buy up houses and convert them to rentals, thus destabilizing our neighborhoods even more. We all know that having more tenants in a house means more potential profit for landlords. For example, within a year of our family purchasing our home in the city, four other houses in the neighborhood were sold and immediately became rentals. We were the only house that year that became a family residence. Of the purchases that year, within that year, one was a county resident who was purchasing her fifth rental house in the city. The other three houses were bought by a single private investor, so three houses in one neighborhood, single private investor. And what's more, both landlords separately applied for and received the four-person exception for their new rentals. Clearly, the four-person exception contributed to the further imbalancing of our neighborhood. There's really no question on that fact. We shouldn't perpetuate a policy that unintentionally imbalances our neighborhoods. So we should pause, take time to make some reasonable decisions about those unintended consequences. Again, I've alluded to already, we need to keep in mind the larger goal. You know, this is couched within the Neighborhood Balance Committee and that ideal that we all have for a neighborhood, for neighborhoods imbalance. But I'm not sure that we've defined what a neighborhood, balanced neighborhood looks like. Are we defining it quantitatively? Are we defining it qualitatively? And I would suggest that we should define it in both ways. You know, a simplistic quantitative definition would be 50/50. That's a kind of simplistic notion of, of balance. If so, you know, we've got some that are at that and exceeded that in terms of the, the rental to owner occupied homes. The fact is that Matoka Court is the canary in the coal mine. 70% rentals, 30% owner occupied. I don't think we mean 50/50 when we say balanced neighborhood. Because we know that rental properties by and large have a disproportionate effect on the neighborhoods. We need to look at qualitative indicators as well. We've had, in the six years that we've been there, 31 renters who have lived in the house that is adjacent to our house. If you look at it by, I'm sorry, 21, 21 next to us, if you look at it by what was allowed during those years. By our count, there have been at least 31 students who have lived next to us in that time. Back to that out by all of the rental properties in our neighborhood and you approach about 150. I call that churn. There's an extraordinary amount of churn that affects our neighborhoods as well. Again, not because of the blue dots alone, but because of the striped ones as well. And so as we look at this, let's please do it in the context of the larger goal here of a balanced, what a balanced neighborhood is. Our house is our single biggest investment as a family. It's a place of repose. It's our family home.
Thank you, sir.
We look, we hope that you'll send us a good message today. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming forward. The next speaker card I have is Debbie Keen. Just state your name for the record, please, and your address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Debbie Keen and I reside at 718 Jamestown Road. We've owned our home for 21 years now and I've seen a horrendous deterioration of the neighborhood around us. In the comprehensive plan, which we were involved with many times over the years, there has always been a huge stress to maintain the neighborhoods in the city. I'm not sure what plan was enacted, but what I can tell you is in that the past 20 years, more and more residential homes have become rentals. Let me stress when I say rentals, we all know there are two types of rentals. Many neighborhoods in the country have great residential areas with rentals. The occupants buy into the neighborhoods, they respect their neighbors, they keep up their homes that they live in. The grass is mowed, the parties end at dusk and everybody cares about their neighbors. This is not the story here in Williamsburg. Most rentals here have become student rentals. Student rentals are just that. They come for four years, they live in a student rental for two years and they leave. This is a different term and should be noted as such. I listened to Cody Armstrong, the William &amp; Mary student who spoke last at the work session. He stated that students have the right to exist in these neighborhoods at the amount that they do. I'm not sure why he thinks anyone has a right to any specific neighborhood. If you can't afford a specific neighborhood, that doesn't mean the town changes the rules to make it affordable for you. There are many neighborhoods I can't afford to live in, that's part of life. He also stated that students make up 50% of the city when we were, when they're all here. I'm not really sure what that matters. Tourists and international workers make up more than the students when they're in town. Does that give them the right, more rights than homeowners? They have invested in this community? This, of course, is an entirely different issue because it needs to be looked at down the road as to why the students even have a right to vote when it's not their legal residence. He also stated that the four-person rule, these houses are more affordable than midtown, excuse me, Midtown Row. I'm not sure that is the city's responsibility to provide affordable housing to students. Maybe that should be addressed with the college instead. Student rentals within the city have become a huge issue for the neighborhoods. I will say there are exceptions to the rules, but for the majority, it is an issue. How many calls have the police received on noise and disturbance in rentals that are not occupied by students? I've tried to obtain that information today, but was unable to. Why is it that at all the public forums regarding these issues, students claim that they want to be a part of the community? But then they party till 2:00 AM, keep their neighbors awake and leave trash on the neighbors' lawns? Again, the city's goal since we've moved here is to keep the residential areas protected. That is what we need from the city right now. We elected you to protect our neighborhoods, our livelihoods, our investments and our families. What we need is enforcement. You can make all the rules you want, the students will continue to have, jam students into every one of those houses and no one enforces those regulations. But we, as a licensed, tax-paying Board of Health and Fire Inspector Ben Breakfast, we must provide the city a monthly report of how many cars are in my driveway every single night and how many people came in those cars. So we are monitored and scrutinized and there's none on rentals. We've heard for years about this, the community needs to support students. The college attempts to support the neighborhoods, but 20 years later, it's only worse. A perfect example is a five-bedroom home behind me, which has just been purchased by a student. The student plans to live in it and rent it to three other students, making it off-campus fraternity. Really? In a residential neighborhood? I have to tell you, there won't be enough police working nightly to answer the calls that I will be making. Where does the college take any responsibility in this? Why does the city, why does the burden fall on the city police to respond to college students? My taxpayer dollars are going to pay for the police to waste time breaking up a college party. Only to have the, only for them to wait until the police leave and they start all over again. Enforcement with consequences is the only answer. I know there's one landlord who's been extreme, we've been extremely excited to know, who has several rentals around us. Mr. Granger has consequences written into his lease, which he enforces. We have had his students in rentals all around us, we would welcome them back in a heartbeat. But for those who choose not to monitor their renters' actions, I feel the city must enforce the city regulations. I feel strongly, until we get the student rental under control, this city must put a pause on the four-person rule. Why do we continue to open the floodgates if we are already drowning and we have no life preservers? Everyone sitting at that table up there is here to protect us as residents. We as residents are asking for help. We're demanding enforcement and we're requesting to pause the four-person rule, please.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Thank you. The next speaker's card I have is John Strong. Welcome, Mr. Strong.
Thank you. My name's John Strong. I live at 321 Burns Lane. I remember back in 2010, when the four-person rule was discussed and adopted, there were four main reasons that council cited. The first was there was a shortage of on-campus and rental housing close to the college. In the 20 years prior to 2015, the college had added 1,400 residential students, but only 500 additional housing units. But with the renovation and expansion of Green and Gold Village, the conversion of the Hospitality House and the conversion of the Days Inn into Richmond Hall, the college has now added significant amounts of housing. The imminent opening of Midtown Row will also add to that supply. So any shortage of housing close by has been alleviated. The second reason was that the effect on existing owner occupied housing, owner occupied properties would be small since as Councilman Ramsey just pointed out, a relatively small number of three-person rentals could be converted to four. But that perspective's been proven wrong. The vast majority, four-fifths of the 38 current four-person rentals, were formerly single-family owned homes. Moreover, the policy has encouraged a small group of investors to hold many of the current 38 properties. Half of the four-person properties are owned by five investor groups. And in the past five years, three-fourths of all of the four-person properties have become investor-owned. The multi-property investor group is becoming the norm for Williamsburg rentals and we should understand that. Current city regulations clearly create incentives for absentee investor rental conversions. The third point that was raised at the time of adoption was that regulation would enhance oversight and enforcement of rental occupancy regulations, both for three and for four-person rentals. And in fact, that's exactly what then-Mayor Holman said. As we've heard, sort of the issue about enforcement has been a hit or miss matter at best. And I'd just like to quote from an article in the Flat Hat, the student newspaper. Quote, "One off-campus student has seven other roommates in order to make the monthly rent of his four-bedroom house. Although the house meets the square footage requirement, the residents do not participate in the four-person program and instead sign three people to the lease. The other residents remain under the radar." Continuing in the article, "Landlords are often the people that tell students it's okay if six people live here, but only three of you should put your name on the lease." That's a quote from the student paper. The fourth reason was that the four-person person, four-person program was intended as a trial program to subsequently be evaluated. Last month at the Planning Commission meeting, Elaine Macbeth, the chair, noted that this review has never been undertaken. There have been some ad hoc discussions, but a promised review was never undertaken. In fact, the fact that the Planning Comis, three of the five Planning Commission members didn't know that the, that the four-person convert, transferred with the property says we haven't thought about this very carefully for a decade. In summary, over the past decade, city policy has encouraged the transition of owner occupied housing to investor-owned rental properties. It's important to recognize that many of the homes in the designated neighborhoods currently have and have had long-term older owners. Many of these properties will be coming up for sale in the next decade. To continue as owner occupied housing, many of the properties will require substantial reinvestment, substantial modernization. These investments are difficult for many first-time homeowners and with, and for any new homeowners and younger homeowners. Just as the council provided incentives for four-person conversions, it would be good if council developed incentives to attract and retain homeownership as well. Lastly, many of the issues that council has faced in the last few years, noise ordinances and enforcement, trash can regulations, parking enforcement, to name a few, relate to the changing nature of neighborhoods. Yet we continue to fall prey to having a discussion about a narrow policy when it all applies to a broader context. Would encourage you to consider the moratorium and the recommendations of the Neighborhood Balance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. The next speaker's card I have is Glenda Lindsey.
Hi, my name is Glenda Lindsey and I live at 207 Burns Lane. My husband and I have lived in our house in the Burns Lane neighborhood for 13 years. We purchased our house on Burns Lane in 2003 and didn't live in it until 2008. From the time that we purchased the house, we had multiple offers from students and their parents to rent our house. Because of our respect for our neighbors, we never considered renting the house to multiple unrelated people. Since then, we have invested a lot of time, of money and poured a lot of work into making our house something that we are proud of and one that adds value to we, to our neighborhood. We are both in our mid-70s and we realize that the time will come shortly that we won't be able to live in our house anymore. We don't want to find that out in five years, that there might be even more investment rentals in our neighborhood and that our house may be difficult to sell and that all of the improvements that we made were worthless investments. There are currently nine homes in our neighborhood that are rented to students. One out of town Burns Lane owner, landlord owns three properties which are approved for four-person in each house. These houses are rented for at least $1,000 per month plus. And you do the math, our city can quickly become an investor's paradise. By allowing four people to rent a property, I believe it is incentive to attract, attract more speculators to buy up property for the sole purpose of renting to students. I would also be willing to bet you that there aren't many single professionals who would want to live in a house with three other people they don't know and pay over $1,000 a month each, per each person to live in this type of accommodation. I also can't imagine a family who might have the income to allow them to pay $3,000 or $4,000 per month rent who would want to move into the house, into a house that has been previously occupied by three to four adults who haven't given much, if any, thought to cleaning or upkeep of the house they reside in. The cycle of the residents' rentals in the city is three or four unrelated people move in a house, live in it for one to two years, then they move out and the next group moves in without the landlord doing anything cosmetically inside or out to keep the property in good shape or add value to the property. There are four four-person rentals in our neighborhood. With the exception of two property owners, I have never witnessed the interior of any of these properties ever being repaired, painted or even professionally cleaned for that matter. I can't think of anyone in the real estate business that would say that continuing this cycle is going to be good for a neighborhood. As an owner of rental property in Northern Virginia since 1982, I know from personal experience that if you don't, if you own real estate, you must invest money in it for it to retain its value, also in order to find good prospective renters, have a well-maintained, clean, painted and is imperative for attracting good renters. Safety should be another concern for the city. As a member of the city council, if you have not done so recently, I would recommend that you drive down some of the streets off of Jamestown Row corridor, just to see what they look like. When the houses on Griffin were all, are all occupied, it's impossible for more than one car to pass on the street at a time because of the cars are all parked on both sides of the street. If there's ever a fire or a serious emergency on the street, it would be impossible for multiple emergency vehicles to park at the curb. They would have to park in the middle of the street, essentially blocking all traffic from entering or exiting. It isn't much better on South Boundary. I feel that it's incumbent on the city council to focus their attention on the homes that are long-term owner occupied and look out for our best interest. If the city continues down the road to make it easy for more speculators to buy rental property, not only our homes will decline in value, but the tax base will go down and ultimately cause taxes to increase. Equally important, the very nature of our neighborhoods will shift from family-owned occupied to transient rentals. In 2020, the city council noted that demand for affordable housing was, had exceeded its supply. Affordable housing was deemed such a crisis that it is among the city's goals, initiatives and outcomes for the past two years. It seems that every time I pick up the Gazette, there's a story about housing shortages. I submit that city councils being disingenuous to the city to set affordable housing as one of its goals while at the same time continually to essentially entice investors to buy up property with the sole, with the purpose of making them solely cash cows. I leave you with the following information that I obtained from the City of Williamsburg property database. There are currently 38 four-person rentals in Williamsburg. 14 of the four-person rental properties are owned by, 14 of them are owned by out-of-town landlords. 29 of the properties are either owned by a limited liability company, they're incorporated or they're individuals who own multiple properties.
Ms. Lindsey, if you could wrap it up, you've exceeded your time.
I will. I will.
Thank you.
Eight of the four-person properties are owned by a current sitting member of the Planning Commission. As a homeowner, I'd like to appeal to the city council to approve the proposed moratorium, and I would also, I'd like to encourage them to remove the automatic transfer from landlord to landlord.
Thank you for your time. The next speaker's card I have is Mr. Jim Penny.
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name is James Penny and I reside at two oh nine Burns Lane, purchased the property in two thousand and eight, and we moved in permanently in twenty sixteen. At the time we purchased our eighteenth-century house in two thousand and eight, we understood that the only student renters in our neighborhood were those renting rooms in single-family houses. We invested more than one million dollars to shore up our house's structure, improve it, and add on to it. We were surprised when we retired and permanently moved into our house in twenty sixteen to discover noise from student parties in the neighborhood, which included noisy non-resident students walking up and down Burns Lane to and from parties. Those students who walk up and down the street also tend to throw trash into our neighborhood yards, and there's extreme disappointment about that. We sometimes question our decision to move onto Burns Lane and invest so much into our house. The increasing number of student rentals is causing our close-in neighborhoods to decline. I was pleased to serve on the city's Neighborhood Balance Committee because I thought we could make a positive difference for our close-in neighborhoods. We spent many hours listening to testimony from housing experts in other college cities and towns, and were particularly concerned by information from the Blacksburg representative about a close-in neighborhood there that has eighty-five percent student rentals where the remaining long-term residents feels if they are under siege. This is one reason that the Neighborhood Balance Committee has recommended a three-year moratorium on granting four-person rentals. After all of our hard work, the city should adopt our recommendation. Four-person rentals provide an economic incentive of a thousand dollars or more in each month for rent for the investors and encourages them to purchase properties in close-in neighborhoods to convert to student rentals. As we have more of these four-person rentals in the neighborhood, it becomes increasingly difficult to attract single families to purchase homes in the neighborhood. Several recent single-family purchasers in our neighborhood were surprised and disappointed to learn that there are so many student rentals in our neighborhood. Four-person rentals bring additional noise, trash, pedestrians, and vehicles into our neighborhoods. In addition, many landlords do not maintain the rental properties in the same way as resident family owners would. Many neighbors have told me that city council represented the four-person rental provision as an experiment to be evaluated later. It is time for that evaluation to take place, and the moratorium provides an excellent opportunity to undertake that evaluation process. I'm for city council to vote for our city and its long-term residents by adopting the Neighborhood Balance Committee's recommendation of a three-year moratorium on approving four-person rentals. A vote against the moratorium is a vote for real estate investors, many of whom do not live here, and it's a vote for short-term renters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. The next speaker's card I have is Nancy Bolash.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Bolash and I live, live at three twenty-seven Burns. Throughout my involvement with the city, I've had many conversations with fellow downtown historic neighborhood residents inside and outside of my Burns Lane neighborhood. It has broken my heart to hear how defeated many feel, how they despair over the neighborhood disintegration that has deepened and accelerated particularly during the past decade. They have expressed to me, "The city just doesn't care." "But wait," I told them, "the city has set up this Neighborhood Balance Committee. We're going to try to learn from the mistakes of other college towns and see what we need to do to lead Williamsburg to the forefront in this, to turn things around to restore and maintain balance between permanent and temporary residents." The committee, as you heard from Ms. Murphy, was a real cross-section of citizens, and we came up with some solutions after working very diligently on this. Of months of effort and focus on the issue, we were able to conclude with a series of recommendations. We did what you asked us to do, and in turn, I ask you to take our conclusions and recommendations very seriously. One of our first proposals is now before you. This is a comparatively easy proposal as it does not cost a lot of money and it impacts many folks. If you waver on this one, what does that portend to the hard proposals that lay ahead? The ones that cost real money and have long-term implications? This proposal just asks you to pause with the status quo and embrace the impact just as you would with any other experiment. It's rather shocking that this has not been done in ten years. Now is the time to ask those hard questions. How does the four-person rule impact the city? Who did it benefit the most? And was that the intention of the rule? What role, if any, has it played in the degradation of the historic neighborhoods through increased noise, decay, traffic, and altered buying patterns for our homes? Please support this moratorium. Please start down a road of real restoration. Let me be able to tell the neighbors that yes, the city cares and is doing everything that it can to restore true balance to our historic neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker's card, don't sit down yet, Bill.
This is Bill Carr. Would you like to come forward? Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Mr. City Manager and City Staff, good afternoon. I first want to endorse everything what the others, previous speakers have spoken so eloquently about, and I hope to do half the goodest job as they. My name is Bill Carr. I live at three sixteen Indian Springs Road. My wife and I have lived in the same house for thirty years. I'll note that I've served twenty-three years consecutive, twenty-three consecutive years by combining my tenure on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Economic Development Authority. I also was a member of the Neighborhood Balance Committee. I respect the challenges of being a city council member. Over the past thirty years, I have seen Indian Springs evolve from a neighborhood that used to have former president of Women Mary College, director of Bruton Parish Church, a Virginia Supreme Court judge, city council members, college professors, doctors, lawyers, other professionals, retirees, and yes, college students, all residing together and possessing a pride of ownership to a neighborhood now that is primarily occupied by students and houses that are in disrepair and yards that are not maintained. Today's much different Indian Springs is a neighborhood in decline and one that is out of balance. We need your help. I respectfully ask that each of you vote in favor of the three, of the three-year moratorium on the four-person rule. The experiment, the experiment that began in two thousand and ten when the city began to allow the unrelated individuals to live in houses has wreaked havoc on various neighborhoods adjacent to the college, all due to financial incentives. Put directly, more directly put, more money for landlords. This experiment has to stop. The outsourcing by the College of Women Mary for the lack of housing accommodations for its students' possible population must stop. The banning of alcohol on campus has merely moved the problem across Jamestown Road. Several years ago, my wife and other residents were subjected to profanities when close to three hundred, three hundred students assembled at one house in Indian Springs Road, drank beer, played music, and was on top of the roof. The college had forewarned the professors that the students may be excited about the last day of classes, but it did not forewarn the residents of Indian Springs. There were at least two police cruisers, ingress and egress were stopped. I showed the video that my wife took to the former city manager and not much was done about it. I were rhetorically asked, "Does a college's current strategic plan provide for additional campus, on-campus dormitories?" I was informed several years ago, it does not. Quantitatively, Indian Springs on a population and housing unit census is out of balance. There are more student rental SFRs than non-traditional family occupied FSRs. So let me emphasize this point. Why would the city council consider allowing an additional four-person FSR when by law and without any permission from the city, one can rent to three individuals? Think about it. Every SFR, single-family residential unit in thirty in Indian Springs could have three renters. Why does one want to exacerbate the problem by adding one additional student now? We've already heard from many speakers, we're not trying to terminate the four-person rule. We are just asking for a pause. It does not affect any of the existing units. Moreover, and I don't think people have said this, sooner or later, the city is going to have to deal with VRBO. It's going to come. It's going to be more demand for people to rent their houses. So we're talking about now, if we don't have a moratorium, allowing more houses to become four-person, adding another individual, student, or whomever, and sooner or later, we're going to have to deal with people wanting to rent their homes out on weekends when they're not there or other periods of time. It's just going to put more and more pressure. So why not put a pause on what we can do without, as someone said earlier, without any costs, without any hurting any current landlord? Please listen to what we are saying. Now is the time to press the pause button, button. Well, let me, I'm running out of time, so let me do this real quick. I opened the Virginia Gazette and I have, I see where we have public notice, city council meeting on this, this meeting here. And then I turned the next page and we have the comprehensive plan. And number two, it says, "Preserve and protect the city's single-family neighborhoods." All we're asking for you to do is preserve and protect our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. I don't have any more speaker's cards, but if anybody else would like to come forward, please, yes, ma'am? Welcome to state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Janet Smith. I live on three fourteen Griffin Avenue. And I want to start by saying I'm against student rentals. That's a colleges' problem. But I want to let you know how it's been handled in our area. Number one, we have Barbara Ramsey living in our area. She goes to each house and introduces herself. The students know her, she knows them. Once a year, we have a neighborhood picnic, Griffin, Newport, Pollock Park, that area, Carey Street. We invite the students, we ask them to participate with bringing food. Barbara handles the arrangements with the city. They provide hot dogs and barbecue, and I think Barbara probably provides the rest of it. This has done miracles for our problems. It has stopped the trash. Now, we still get parties in the neighborhood, but we don't have the noise problems. If we do, somebody shows up and quiets them down. It's incredible what getting to know the students does. What you really need is one of y'all to be at each of the problem areas, but you can't have Barbara.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Sabrina Fairbanks. I'm a landlord on Carey Street, one of those, but not one of those. I wanted to talk to you about something specific to the four-person rentals, but also to the three-person rentals. But I will say, after listening to the other citizens, I, I do agree with what they're saying about the four-person rentals and, and putting a stop to it. Because as I look at these, I can tell you from personal experience, two of those are, one's a fraternity house, one's a sorority house, one has been a field hockey house, and one has been a tri-delt, let's see, I already said that, field hockey, and I can't remember the other organization. But my point is, is that these larger homes lend themselves to organizations, to events, to parties, and oftentimes, when the police come to a party, they will make them go inside because of the noise. So if you've got a really small apartment, you know, it's not conducive to the parties, which these places are. But the paper that I handed you today addresses a loophole that Carolyn mentioned about guests. And I was looking at the codes and I couldn't find anything about guests except, and I don't know if Carolyn said I'm right about this, homeowner occupied. But as a landlord, I can tell you, this is how they are moving more people in, is they say, you know, "Who's, who's using this guest pass to park here twenty-four-seven? Oh, that's, that's a guest. That's, you know, my girlfriend's visiting." Well, you know, she's been here six months, you know? So that if somehow the city could put in a code where you are defining a guest, I see where you define families, and that would be very helpful to landlords and because I'm going to get my rent money, whether there's three people in there or there's six people. And it helps me get rid of those extra people because there's too much wear and tear on my, on my rental. I don't want them in there. It just gives me more plumbing problems and it would help the neighbors when they're trying to tell you, you know, "There's not three people living in there, there's seven." You know, "The field hockey team is living in there." Well, if they, if right now, if they say they're a guest, what they do, they find every loophole. So they'll, they'll stay there thirty days on the sofa and leave and then come back and then the thirty days starts over again. So if you would define, and, and we've had to do this with our lease, and that's what I've handed you is a copy of that section of our lease, you know, "Oh, it was a guest, but they were only here seven days." Well, then they would leave and then they would come back. So now we say fourteen days, the entire calendar year. The parking pass, we had, you see there, we had to put in our lease, you know, "A guest means somebody who's visiting you while you're at home." And, you know, the citizens here could probably attest to it, there's people who use guest passes, the, they're, the people who are on the lease, they've gone home for Christmas and this person's still there, and they don't go home because that is their home. But they'll always tell you, or they'll tell the city, you know, "It's a guest." So I think if you could close that loophole with a definition of a guest and have some timelines, and then still going to come down probably to neighbors letting the city know that they're, you know, this is how they're getting extra people to reside there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm everyone's favorite person in this audience right now. My name's Cody Armstrong. I'm a student at William and Mary who just actually moved into Old Dominion today, so that's pretty exciting. First, I want to defend myself and what I said on Monday. I was just told that students don't have rights to live in these neighborhoods, and that's completely wrong. This town was nothing without the college. Let's be- Let's be frank, and let's be clear. The college was established in sixteen ninety-three, the town was established in sixteen ninety-nine. People come here for tourism for two reasons, Colonial Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary. We bring thousands upon thousands of people to the city every single year, for football games, for basketball games, for college tours, new students and their families. We provide so much to this community, and our voices matter. That is the biggest thing that I want to leave here with. We matter, whether we live on campus or we live off campus. And I find it appalling that some members of this community would even think that students don't deserve the right to vote in the city. We lived here for four years, some even more. Caleb, he's a city councilman, and he just graduated last year. We have Yuri, who is a transfer student, who now lives here and works as our economic, acting economic developer, which everyone should give her an applause for that because I'm so proud of her.
You can just address council, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, sorry. But, um, the point is, these students, they live off campus, they live in the community, and they realize that they want to live here forever. I've been working with the city for the past two months, and I've even realized how much I love this city because I've gotten to know the people that are working here. We need to provide opportunities for students to live off campus. And frankly, this moratorium is what Joe Biden would call malarkey. It doesn't do anything. It is, if you put a moratorium, it's just going to put a stop. It doesn't put a fire to examine anything. It doesn't put a fire to do any extra policies. It's just a, a moratorium. It does absolutely nothing, except put a veil over what's happening. Let's work on solutions to get better parking. Let's work on solutions to incentivize students to be better in these neighborhoods. Let's incentivize landlords to take care of their properties. Let's make sure that we can ensure a better community whole around. It doesn't mean getting rid of students or limiting the amount of four-person rentals because, in the end of the day, three-person rentals are still going to pop up. That's the thing. This is, this policy is a waste of time, truly. It is, it is, we are sitting here almost on an hour and thirty minutes of being in this meeting, and this kind of does nothing. Let's, let's work together to solve these solutions. I do want to talk about some specific problems that I've heard. People mentioned that it's the, the college's problem to handle housing. Well, the college isn't handling the problem. They mentioned GGV, which is a freshman hall that is actively sinking in the ground and is actually one of the worst dorms on that campus, as someone who lived in that dorm. They talk about OTP, which was closed for a year, forcing sophomores, seniors, and seniors to have to move off campus. We talk about Richmond Hall, a hall that is infested with mold and still needs repair, and was not even used last year except for quarantine housing. So let's be frank, students belong and have a right to these neighborhoods. They're still going to exist after this moratorium. They're still going to exist in high-quality numbers in these houses illegally. So let's find ways to curb that. Let's find ways to work with landlords, to work with students, and build a stronger and better community. I expect better from the people who've lived here for, for so long. I've, this is going on my fourth year of being here, and I've never seen such vitriol hate against students. And it, that's, that's a problem. We should be working with kindness. We should be working towards, together. We should be working like Councilmember Barbara. She is doing an amazing job in her neighborhood, as one of the previous speakers talked about. Let's do that. Let's work with students, let's work with police, let's work with everyone involved to make these communities better. I, I really want to leave this final thing. Someone said earlier, a vote, a vote against this is for short-term renters. Let's be frank, and let's be true. A vote for the, against this is a vote for students. It's a vote to show that students belong in this community just as much as long-year residents, because you know what those students, they turn into longtime residents. The Planning Commission is full of William &amp; Mary, people who are related to William &amp; Mary, alumni, current students. It has produced a current student, a former student to now be a city council member. Let us build a community that is stronger, not divisive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Question, if I did not finish my time, whether I'm allowed to come back? I don't know what the procedure is.
Since you're there, go ahead and if you take a minute or so.
I just wanted to reassure you, there is no shortage of kindness in the neighborhoods towards students. In our Burns neighborhood, we bake baskets of cookies every single year to give to our student neighbors to welcome them into our neighborhood. They are also invited to our picnic that we hold, and we give free or reduced costs to all of them to encourage them to be welcomed to our neighborhood. And there are no end to the stories that we can tell you about individual neighborhoods having a relationship with these students. So this is not the issue. The issue is to look back and say, what has changed? We survived for many, many years, living in tandem and quite well, but it seems like the problems have accelerated in the past few years. And I hope by taking the four-person moratorium to heart, that we can start looking into what has made the difference, why has, have problems snowballed here over the past few years, and see what we can do to turn things around, not just with kindness, but also with hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Afternoon. David Cramby, 201 Harrison Avenue, homeowner of a rental property across the street. Described it Monday. At six hundred and fifty dollars, we're making a profit. Two large bedrooms, one large kitchen, a full-size bath, a living room, dining room area, washer dryer. What's going on with four persons is making one huge profit, at the expense of all the other people around. And with unbelievable statistics about outside ownership and multiple house ownership, we've turned our neighborhoods into a commercial sector. The next Bezos of the world are getting their funding started right here in Williamsburg. Now, I agree with a student who just spoke, and had a nice chat with him after Monday. We agreed on many things. There's one thing he said that's very important. This whole thing is a waste of time, with just voting for the pause. What he did say, which was positive, is that there's a whole lot of work to be done in kindness, as was just said, working as a team with lots of ideas that came out in informal discussions on Monday with several of you. But it's broad discussions. It isn't just, the four-person rule has a lot of positive aspects to it, as we've heard. But this is a huge issue, and the word is balance. Bill Carr said, everybody said. I started here in nineteen seventy. First half of that period, up until nineteen ninety, was in Burns Lane. The last half has been on Harrison Avenue, and the last thirty years have been a gradual, steady, clear deterioration of the balance in these neighborhoods and the quality of life for single-family ownership. So where we're going forward is with ideas, and unfortunately, Andrew's well aware of them. They're going to be expensive. They should get priority higher than the athletic center we're trying to build for increasing tourism, because these neighborhoods are the people, as described by Bill Carr and whatever, who've lived here in the past, who actually fund, pay the taxes on meals, buying things in our city center and on our other commercial neighborhoods. They're the core that's funded the city, residents during this pandemic with minimal tourism. So we have got to figure out, and I don't have any answers, what's an appropriate balance between ownership, because that's long-term, and certain kind of expenditures, so forth, and rentals. We've got to provide, figure out a balance between rentals of all different types, and one of them is having rental houses for modest-income families as well as students. And to do this, we're going to have to provide financial incentives to get this done, and we're going to have to curtail the for-profit attitude that seems to have permeated these neighborhoods. And it means that, to do this, the Planning Commission didn't even read the report, as I understand it, before, and discuss it in detail. I'm worried about putting this burden on the Planning Commission, as has been proposed. The key has to be city staff. Now, the Planning Commission is a perfectly appropriate structure, but it needs to have a huge support of city staff, listening to these ideas, talking to the city attorney, because some of them I'm not sure can fly, and coming up with integrated suggestions. And it has to be set up that there's input with, I mean, there was fantastic presentations here this morning, this afternoon. And so we've got to let all of these people come in with their ideas and get it worked out, and it isn't going to happen in one workshop, trust me. It's going to happen in little meetings, little conversations, like the thirty minutes I've had with a couple of you that went a long way. So this is a complex challenge, and we have to set up the right structure, coordinated and led by city staff, and then whatever committees are appropriate, that's, that's perfect. But then it's a multi-month endeavor, and so I strongly urge you to support the moratorium, the pause, and then let's work hard on the plan to move forward, to address everything that came up. I have a lot of confidence in you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and let me just first state for the record, this to me is not an anti-student issue. This is, this is an issue about neighborhood balance, quality of life, neighborhood sustainability for the long term. Students have been in our neighborhoods for a long, long time, but a lot of things have changed in the last thirty years, that changed the nature of the neighborhoods, that changed the nature of on-campus housing or living, as Mr. Carr stated. You know, drinking policies have pushed students into the neighborhoods and changed the nature of how students lived in our neighborhoods. You know, I've been living next to the college for, gosh, almost fifty years, and I've seen the changes myself. The house I moved into was a duplex that Martha Barksdale owned and rented the second floor to students. But when my family moved in, that pushed some students further away. So those types of changes have happened. The house I live in now, Mary Daniels built it with three suites, so that two students could live in the house with her. But when my family moved in, that changed. And those types of things happen over the course of history. And so where we are today is, we're wrought with investor creep. Investors are moving into our neighborhoods and changing the nature of single-family neighborhoods. And I think this pause, this moratorium, allowing us the opportunity to do some research, do some studies, talk about parking, talk about, you know, any number of things. But most importantly, it's, it's got to include engaging the university. I think previous administrations were reluctant to enforce the code of conduct to students off-campus. I think the current administration may feel differently about that, and I think that's going to be an important part of how we move forward with our student housing, whether we re-implement the four-person rule or not. And I think there's, there's a place for that. And I'll go back to, I was on that committee many, many years ago, because one of the, one of the things that we noticed, we all felt it, long-term residents and students, is that these larger houses that students were living in, some were living in illegally. We didn't want our students' population to have that burden, to have the burden that they may be kicked out of their house because, you know, there's four people living in a large house. Seven-Eleven, Richmond Road is the prime example. You know, and so we had to figure out a way to make, you know, take, make that opportunity available for students to live in these larger houses, and I think it was a good, good policy that we created. There's a lot of good things there, but there are some unintended consequences that this moratorium will allow us to go back to research. So I do support that moratorium. And so with that, I'll turn now to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, obviously, first of all, thanks to everyone that spoke here today and has contacted members of council to provide your thoughts. And as the mayor pointed out, there's been a tremendous amount of input, positive input, and things that we need to consider. You know, for me, the, the Neighborhood Balance Committee, thanks to all the members that work so hard there, talking to those members, there was a tremendous amount of research and discussion and deliberation to bring these recommendations forward. And, you know, it's been mentioned here today, there's been, you know, there's some, there's some great things in the policy, but there's been some intended and unintended consequences. And after ten years, now's the time to step back and take a look at that and see how we can improve it. There's, it's been mentioned several times today, it's not here to abolish it, we're not here, even if we vote today to impose this moratorium, we're not taking away the thirty-eight properties that already have the ability to have, to house four people. You know, and for me, foundationally, when, when I continue to get feedback from members of the community and the Neighborhood Balance Committee, and it, and it was, it was stated here today, if we've asked the Neighborhood Balance Committee to look at all these options, and for me, if I put that aside, I've done an injustice to that group that we've asked to look at all these issues. And if we put that aside, what does that say to all of our other committees that do work, are assigned to do work for us, or volunteer to do work for us, and, and we put it aside? We may not always agree, but we have to step back and consider the recommendations that have been presented to us. And, you know, as Mr. Garrett stated today, there, what's the harm right now to take that pause? Moratorium came up to me as, some people didn't like the word moratorium. Pause, put it in park, whatever you want to call it, now is the time to do that, and to take everything into consideration, and as, you know, there is a lot of work to it. But there's, we're willing, we're willing to step back and take a look at something that's been in place for a while. You know, we knew, we have new housing options out there that are coming online that weren't available when, when this ordinance was initiated. You know, there's, there's other available options, whether some people may agree or disagree that they're affordable, but you've, you know, you know from your research what investors are charging for some rental properties, so I do think there's affordable housing options out there. And for those reasons and many others, I think it's in the best interest of, of Williamsburg to support this three-year moratorium.
All right, thanks. And I, I agree with the previous comments, and focusing on what we saw in the Planning Commission, I would encourage that the Neighborhood Balance Committee present all of their recommendations to the Planning Commission, so they can, as they requested, to take a holistic approach, and then as was suggested, let staff weigh in and figure out how do we move forward with solutions. I think at some point, we should be discussing the, what the, explaining what the revised motion is that we're going to be voting on, too. Get to that. Comments?
Unfortunately, yes.
Did I set the clock on you?
Yeah. So, so I have a, a lot of comments, some that, anyway, it's, it's across the board, and so I'm just going to say that, like Mr. Strong, I looked back to the minutes from the two thousand and nine meeting when this was discussed, and to me, it was important to try to understand the intent originally of the, of the four-person allowance, and a student assembly speaker, I guess she was a senior at the time, put it very succinctly. In her view, it was to deal with housing availability, housing affordability, and accessibility to campus. And as we've heard, a, a number of things have changed over those ten years. There's much more availability since then. We have One Tribe Place, Richmond Hall, fraternity houses, which are new. We have Tribe Square, which is fairly new. We have, outside of, of campus, we have Griffin Arms, the City Lofts, High Street, Newtown, Aura, and Midtown. And then the question of affordability, like has been mentioned... And then the question of affordability, like has been mentioned, I think that in some of the areas, we've created many monopolies. There are three out of the five four-person ownerships in the Burns Lane are owned by one person, four out of the five on Jamestown Road are owned by the same family, two out of two on Braxton Court are owned by, by the same property investors. And, and so there's not as much competition, as I think was originally thought there would be with the four-person. And I tried to find out what the rental rates are, and they're all across the board. Cody and I talked the other day, they're $600, I've heard $1,000. I think I know the house Mr. Strong was talking about, because I had eight students living in a neighborhood near me, and the rent was $4,000 for the house. And the landlord was, it was a three-person house. We've also heard that Midtown Row is too expensive, so I checked with Midtown Row today to find out what their prices actually are. And by the way, they are all rented. But for a person living in a four-bedroom, four-bed, it's $860 for that bedroom. But I think people have to remember that it includes all of the utilities, including internet, it's furnished, the, each person has a bath, each person, each group has a washer and dryer, and they are new. And supposedly, everything will be working in those houses and in those units compared to so many of the old houses in the other neighborhoods. I've also heard that because of the rates that some of the landlords charge close into town, that students are living in Brandywine, they're living in Quarter Path. There was even a student on the Neighborhood Balance Committee who lives in Long Hill Regency, which is almost out to Lafayette High School. The third thing that this student mentioned in '09 was accessibility to campus. William &amp; Mary is fortunate to have a residential campus, they have a lot of activities on campus, but over the past 10 years, we've seen that opportunities expand. We've got the School of Education now, there's, I mean, I see kids going to the rec center all the time, to Kaplan. We have the GRI, we have the IIC, which are a little extended, we have a lot more options and opportunities for, for restaurants, for dining, and for entertainment. So I don't think the need that, I don't think William &amp; Mary campus is as insular and as small as it used to be. And in my view, the increased number of rentals, primarily priced for students, has flipped the availability and affordability for non-students. I was talking to a friend of mine last night who graduated in 2007. He's got his PhD from William &amp; Mary, he's now a dean on campus, and he said, "I would love to be able to live on camp, uh, close to campus, but I can't afford it." And for the students who live in these houses with three and four people, think about whether you could afford that house when you graduate, when you get your job, and you don't want to be living with three and four people. You want to still be close to town, but you want to only have maybe one roommate as opposed to four. And I think the, the reality is that students are here for one or two years, living in the neighborhoods. Yes, they are residents, and I've been fortunate enough to get to know some of them in mine. I mean, one of my neighbors is at Vanderbilt now, getting his PhD. Another one's doing his orthopedic residency at UVA. Another one's at NIH. Another one's working in Northam's Administration. And another one founded Lead Africa. They're all admirable pursuits, but they're not doable in Williamsburg. And so we have a great community, but for students, there are a lot of opportunities for them to go outside, and hopefully, many of them will come back. And some of them will come, stay and go and come like, like I have. I also am concerned, as has been mentioned before, about the property investors who are only interested in the location and if numbers work. And numbers work was expressed to me by someone who bought a house on, in my neighborhood, who paid $100,000 more over the assessed value. And when I mentioned it to him, he says, "Well, the numbers work, that's all I was concerned about." And because investors are concerned with those two key things, then it makes it even harder for families and for young people and for single people who look at, at the schools and whether they can get a mortgage and things like that. And for me, like others have said, this is not about students. I lived in, on Griffin Avenue as a student 45 years ago, and, and I lived in a little student house. And to me, that's one of the things that has changed over the years, is students then lived in multitudes in the neighborhoods. But we lived in those little houses, we lived in, in a house, we rented a room from, from someone, we lived in a basement apartment, and it wasn't the real family homes that were converted to, to rentals. And I would also say that, I mean, I have three four-person houses on Griffin Avenue, they haven't been a problem. In fact, we haven't had any issues really on Griffin Avenue to speak of for a number of years. In fact, one of my neighbors said, who has frequently complained about students, said, "I can't wait to have the students come back this year." He says, "I've really missed them because of, of the pandemic and not being there." And, but I think we have to remember that the issue of rentals and investment starts with the owners. It starts with the seller, who puts the house out there and is willing to, to have it bought by an investor. And so we have to, in my view, look at it holistically, as to other ways that could, could sort of keep the balance there. And I will say that, again, living on Griffin Avenue, even if there weren't any four-person or rental houses, there would still be people parking on both sides of the street. I blame a lot of it, as people have heard me say, on Google Maps, because it directs everyone down Griffin and up Newport. I also think that, you know, it's, it's unfortunate to identify a house as a fraternity house, or a sorority house, or, or this and that. When you're in college, you make friends, and you make friends within the group where you are. And, and I lived with people that I knew, and, and so I have a rental house, and, and I have four girl, three girls from a sorority that live there. And so I don't call it a sorority house, I just call it three girls who got to know each other and, and want to live together, which is just my opinion. And yes, I am a landlord, and I do own a house, but I do think there's a little difference between those who have one property and those who have multiple properties. I would like to, to divest myself of my house, but it becomes difficult because I don't want it to go to another investor. So I keep it until we come up with some ways that landlords who bought houses due to a familial affiliation with William &amp; Mary, I bought mine for my nephew when he was at William &amp; Mary, have some options to, to do that. So overall, I view this one topic as a component of the Neighborhood Balance Committee and of recommendations, and what could and will likely come out of the Affordable Housing Committee. I think taking a pause will allow those recommendations to be developed, and they have been presented to, to city council, city staff is already working on a number of them. We, we identified them as short-term and long-term, and I don't think any of them really need to go before the planning commission because of the nature of those recommendations. Is that the case, Mr. Trivett?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the planning commission is aware of the recommendations, and certainly Ms. Murphy, who participated in the Neighborhood Balance, has advised the planning commission of what the Neighborhood Balance vision was.
So, so to me, as I say, I don't think this in and of itself will restore balance, but it'll give an opportunity for those other recommendations and new ones to be flushed out, so that we can sort of get back to perhaps where we were. So, those are my comments.
Thanks, Ms. Ramsey. Rogers?
Well, I like to always thank, to start my comments with thanks, for everyone who took time out of their day. I know it's a lot to decide to come in the middle of a workday, and so thank you very much to everyone who has, who's decided to come and speak in front of us today. I feel bad that there have been some comments saying that, that the city might not care about this issue, because I know it's something that, that we as councilors certainly care about, and I hope the creation of the Neighborhood Balance Committee, and certainly the consideration of the moratorium is one of the first recommendations from that committee, is a message that the city does care. I also want to thank the members of the Neighborhood Balance Committee, who did all that they could to continue their work despite a pandemic, which had certainly waylaid some of the efforts. So thank you to those who served on the NBC, and certainly thanks to those who I've been able to talk with in the last week. Yeah, I think the goal of the Neighborhood Balance Committee was to try to achieve a harmony between owners and renters in the neighborhoods. And for that reason, I too think that there is a needed refreshing of the four-person allowance. I think the most important thing said today, though, is that this is a proponent, this is a small step towards that effort. It in and of itself is not the only thing that council is able to do. And I think for that reason, a big emphasis on, and from some of our neighborhood and community members, should be what may be taken after this particular motion, rather than this being the one failsafe towards a, a harmony itself. For me, particularly, the best way, I think, to work towards that harmony is the rent-ready program that council has supported and has put into our GIOs as an interest of, of going after, along with ending the allowance, to transfer the four-person allowance from one owner to another, has been mentioned today, as was brought up during the planning commission meeting. Some of the comments I do want to address, though, to be against student renters, or for a vote to be against short-term renters, is a misguided thing to say. You know, I, I would wager that the people we've heard from, many of which have been residents, are, are alumni of the college, are financial contributors to the college, or professors at the college. And so we need to realize collectively that with a connection to William &amp; Mary, we'll also come students, and, and with those students means student renters in our neighborhoods. I understand that there's been, you know, a churn mentioned, and that with that churn might mean that there's a, a new neighbor to introduce yourself to after two years. But we have to recognize that that churn, the institution of William &amp; Mary, which creates that churn, will outlast all of us, which is why someone, whether their status is a renter or an owner, you know, if they are registered to vote in the city of Williamsburg, their vote counts equally either way. So I do think there is a need for a pause, a moratorium. I don't think that it is a need to push that as along a timeline as three years, though. And this is why, it was mentioned, the original intent of the rule was in recognition that there might be a density in the neighborhoods that the city does not have a wanted purview over, that there might be houses which have X number of people over the amount that they should. And as mentioned earlier, those houses were only inspected on a four-year basis, mainly around codes compliance, rather than from a zoning administrator that actually takes the time each year to walk the renters of that house through proper policies for taking their refuse containers back from the road, the noise ordinances in Williamsburg, and as has been mentioned a number of times, parking policy, too. I lived in a, a three-person home myself for two years. It was the size of a postage stamp on Virginia Avenue, and so I, I was not one of the houses that had the yearly inspection. I remember getting the rental guide in the mail, and I can tell you honestly, I'm not sure what happened to it after about two weeks. So when you are in a home that has the allowance of four people, that's a very valuable thing, to have a zoning administrator come to you on a yearly basis, as there is that churn, and be able to say, "This is what is expected for best practices within Williamsburg." And that's why I think a little bit, we've gotten away from that original intent of what the four-person allowance was meant to provide. It's also been said today that William &amp; Mary has not addressed housing at all, and that they're leaving it towards the city. Yeah, I too lived in Green and Gold Village as a freshman, I understand that there are some dorms that the, the students could really benefit from ACN. But I might also say that William &amp; Mary has recently used a huge tool in its tool belt of requiring students, freshmen and sophomores, to live on campus, therefore taking hundreds of potential off-campus renters out of the market, as they're required to live in both their first and second years, which is a major addressing of the on- and off-campus balance. It's also been said to, to wait on the impact of, of Midtown Row and High Street, and I'm certainly looking forward to those coming online. I'm excited to hear that Midtown is now 100% leased. But of everyone in this room, save maybe the current students in this room, I feel that I know the most students, and, and for that reason, can tell you that likely that impact will be to pull students that are in newer apartments, which have those high levels of amenities, that are farther away, such as a Newtown closer to the city. And so to, to use that as an argument, to wait for this moratorium in place, is, I think, a misguided one, is certainly those, as residences, will be utilized, but it won't necessarily pull people from the neighborhoods as much as thought. It was said on Monday, and I want to address affordability here, that the four-person apartment in Midtown, and they have, they have everyone from four to a one-person suite, costs one renter in that four-person apartment about $1,000. And I remember living off-campus on Virginia Avenue, as I mentioned, and my rent, if you include utilities, was around roughly $800 a month. So the ability to live both close to campus, but to also have a price point that better fits your budget, is invaluable to a student, which, quite frankly, is, is sometimes not able to afford the, the nice new amenity of something such as a Midtown Row. I think to end the four-person allowance, let's say we're going three years down the line, and, and a moratorium has been in place, would be short-sighted, because it doesn't necessarily de-densify the neighborhoods. I think instead, it provides the unintended consequence that people already in the neighborhoods won't have a greater oversight from their landlord, because they then would not have a space on the lease themselves. And so those neighborhoods may remain dense, but then they are not given the accountability which should be in place and was provided by the four-person allowance. So I think what, what we want to do about it, what our collective goal is, is to find ways to keep our landlords accountable to both the neighborhoods, as we know that there are some absentee landlords, and we've been given good examples of great landlords, but also the tenants accountable, is having sightly and, and cared-for homes. And for me, the way to do this is the rent-ready program, which was also a recommendation of the Neighborhood Balance Committee, which is why I would rather see that brought online quickly, rather than pushing this decision off another three years. So I believe there should be a pause, but I plan to support the revised text, which I'm looking forward to getting into. So my recommendation ultimately to close is to see that rent-ready program within a year, or at least the, the encouragement of seeing it sooner than three years, to try to implement it before the 2022 school year ideally. That way, our GIO goal has been addressed, but we are also trying to reach the goal of, of everyone who's spoken today, whether they be an owner, a resident, or a renter, also a resident. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think one of the, the common thread, obviously, the common thread is, we all support the moratorium. And I think Mr. Rogers brings up, which I don't think the rest of us did, this rent-ready program, which the committee had suggested, and this, I'm probably not the best person to talk about it, but the, this rent-ready program, maybe staff can help me out with some of the details of what we'd be looking for in that.
Well, I think, Drew, and, and also can probably address why it was pushed out more than a ye- a year.
Sure. Can you talk a little bit about the elements of the rent-ready program, and how the college may be involved in that? I think that everybody would benefit from that.
Yeah, absolutely. I can give you sort of an overview. You know, the Neighborhood Balance Committee at its, at its basis was designed to, to form a group of people who have interest in housing, not just the neighbors, but the students included, landlords represented, even some large-scale property managers participated, and of course, then the university also. And the format for that was that we brought in experts from all over the state and even other places in the country that have large institutions like we do, and manage student housing in much the same way. What I told the, the committee as we began to entertain those presentations is, many of those college towns, in my viewpoint, and I think Carolyn agrees, are 10 years ahead of us, in terms of where they are, and both dealing with their problems and how far their problems have gone. And so it's a really great opportunity, I think, as one speaker said, for us to learn from the mistakes that have been made, and hopefully not follow in those footsteps. So one of the presentations that we had was from the city of Norfolk, and Mr. Homewood, who is a certified planner and does, is the planning director in the city of Norfolk, came and talked to us about some of the things that they do. And one of the programs that he talked a lot about was a program called Norfolk Rent Ready. And essentially what it is, it's a program whereby they voluntarily offer a city certification for rental properties, and it involves a curriculum of classes that the landlords have to take, and then a certain set of standards that are applied to the property. And also, the, the certification, by nature of the fact that it's given by the city, can be taken away for violating some of the standards that are applied through the program. Now, by itself, since I, if you've noted, I've said the word voluntary as many times I can, it doesn't have any teeth by itself. And so the way that it works so well in Norfolk is that the Navy, which is one of the major drivers of rental properties in the city of Norfolk, has said, "There are-" the major drivers of rental properties in the city of Norfolk, has said their off-base housing has to be in certified properties. So, if you're a serviceman in the Navy or woman in the Navy and you look for housing, you've got to find someplace that is certified and meaning it's involved in all those requirements. That gives it credibility without having a statutory authority to be mandatory, which is something that we do not have. So, here in Williamsburg, if you apply that same model, and that's what we tried to do is we presented these ideas, concepts, strategies to the Neighborhood Balance Committee. We divided the presentation into two pieces. The top was, what did we hear from the locality or the location that presented this idea? And then, how does staff feel like it could be implemented in the city of Williamsburg? So, when you consider that here, our Navy is, of course, William &amp; Mary. And so, for us to have a program without the statutory authority to make it mandatory, have some effectiveness in this issue, we need the university to make it a requirement for their off-campus housing as well. And so, that's our intent, is over the next little bit, we'll be drafting the regulations. We will lean heavily on what the city of Norfolk has done and customize it to be, to meet Williamsburg's need. But at the same time, we're having conversations with the university administration about making that a requirement for off-campus housing.
So, when I talk about engaging the college, you know, that's precisely what it is. And if the college were to participate in something like that, I think it would be a game changer for some of the scrupulous landlord investors out there. Hopefully, those, ultimately, those houses could change over to other uses.
And, you know, Mayor, I think we need to say, too, that, to the point of some of the speakers, and I think Mr. Rogers said it, but just to reiterate, the university has been an extremely willing partner in the conversation. And there's no indication that, I think some of the speakers said, there's a feeling in the neighborhoods that the city doesn't care. And I think if you step back and look at the hours spent by the city council, by the staff, by the members of the Neighborhood Balance Committee on this issue in the last two years alone, is pretty astounding. And the fact that the university has participated in every bit of that and has joined us in the conversation about what can we do is a testimony to just how involved they are in helping us solve the problem.
Yeah. And just from my own experience, you know, dealing with university presidents over the last three tenures, Catherine Rowe and Dr. Rowe has certainly been very willing to have these conversations, and I think she's a valuable partner, represents a valuable partner at the college. So, and so, I think in this, the draft, so what you all saw publicly in the proposed ordinance in the moratorium has been a suggestion made that would allow for this rent-ready certification program to be a vehicle in which a house could be approved for a four-person exception. But I think my thought is, there's other things that we need to talk about, and I think parking is one of those things. We need to better understand how we can address some of the issues that Ms. Fairbanks brought up with parking. So, I think there's lots of elements that need to be discussed and studied before we allow for the four-person permits to be issued. So, I almost like the second, the first rendition, because there's still the opportunity to make a change within three years, should some of these programs become available.
By first rendition, which do you mean? The one that is currently on the docket?
Yes.
Or the revised text, which would say whichever is sooner, the rent-ready program or the moratorium conclusion?
Say that again.
So, the first edition, the one that is on the docket and has been, or the revised text saying the conclusion of this moratorium would be whichever is sooner, the rent-ready program, the finishing of that, or the conclusion of three years?
Well, I would, sorry.
So, I think, Chris, you can correct me wrong if I'm wrong. If we adopted the first rendition that's been published in our packet, if council changed, we could make a change to this moratorium at any time within that three years.
Yes.
Right.
If the text amendment, it would require going through the Planning Commission and coming back to city council, just like any other text amendment to the zoning ordinance.
So, if we adopted the second one, we wouldn't have to go through that process?
It's still going to have to come back to the city council.
Right. So, I think that's my point. So, if we adopted the first one, we would still have to go through all these processes to get to a point where we would allow a four-person house to be approved. Makes sense?
Yeah, and that, to your point, if I understand correctly, this is more than just the rent-ready program. We've got a lot of other factors to consider before we would approve a four-person.
So, I would like to see us put the moratorium in place, begin whatever processes that need to happen, studies, the rent-ready program, parking, understanding parking, and then have that discussion at Planning Commission, then come back to council and allow the public to have input, Neighborhood Balance Committee could participate. So, that would be my recommendation.
Well, and only to add in that, it's more than, in my opinion, than just the Neighborhood Balance Committee. There are a lot of recommendations coming, that will be coming out through the Affordable Housing Committee. And I think Mr. Rogers would attest that, to me, this affordability is a big issue within the neighborhoods, too. And so, we need to look at it both together.
So, then would this mean that at the conclusion of this work, it would be three years before the implementation? Or is it the intention of others that we would hope to implement the conclusion of, as is stated, parking concerns, the rent-ready program, transfer of allowance before that timeframe concludes? Because I think the three years is too long. But if, should we want to act on that, which again was a GIO and the GIO is a two-year process, sooner rather than later, I think that'd be fair.
Yes.
So, currently it says it's a moratorium for three years.
Right.
But what I'm implying is and saying is, we can make a change to that in one year, should all of these other studies take place and the community's ready for it.
I think if that's the intention of council, which is what I would hope for.
And that's how it would operate, right?
Yes.
If we had the rent-ready program and we, Affordable Housing Committee had a recommendation, and all that came out in 18 months, council could then...
Direct the city staff to put it on the Planning Commission's agenda, to amend the ordinance, to remove the moratorium, and to amend this program in whatever way council deems appropriate.
Right.
We're not held to only, you know, to three years. We can do something in advance.
Which I also want to say is not to say that we would put into place three years and then cast that aside two years later. I think some of the structural things, maybe the major issues that we've talked about addressing after this moratorium, would be in place with the conclusion of some of this work, which is why we would enact it before the three-year timeframe concludes.
And if the work doesn't occur, then the moratorium will last the entire three years, but at the end of that three-year period of time, the four-person exception would come back into effect.
And if that were the case at that point, council then could...
City council could issue another moratorium, city council could amend the program, city council could repeal the program.
So, today what we're saying is moratorium for three years. What we're also saying is we're going to study this issue, find, you know, look into the rent-ready program in other ways to see if there is a path forward to allowing four-person to come back, and that can happen within a year, you know, assuming we can get through it at that amount of time. So, we're not limited to just three years.
And I think we are incentivized to do it before that three-year happens because at that point, the allowance comes back, as Councilman Ramsey showed, as designed right now. And I think we've heard certainly an interest in refreshing it, and I agree that there are some things that can be changed.
And maybe include rent-ready certification as a requirement.
Yeah, that's what we discussed. Just to be clarified, with rent-ready, it looks like they're two different things working together. One would be the William &amp; Mary's, you know, sort of pushing that program on all rentals, and then anybody who's, you know, once we get to our program together, that could be a requirement of any four-person rental, that the landlord be certified.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that city council approve ordinance 2107 as amended to place a three-year moratorium on the new four, on new four-person rentals.
Second?
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in. Okay, so that takes us to item number six, reports, monthly financial statement. Dameron?
This being a July report, we will not have a projection report because I have about $620,000 in revenue, of which, none of which is for the meals, lodging, or even sales tax because of the lag in revenues. What I can speak to, though, is that while we've seen some significant increases compared to FY20, we're not quite yet back to FY19 in most of our revenues. For example, in lodging, we see an increase of $261,000, and this is a revenue related back to June of '21. So, it's $261,000 for June of '21 compared to June of '20, but it's $47,000 or 13% decrease compared to June of '19. Our meals tax, however, we see a $366,000 increase compared to June of '20. It's about almost level with July of '19. Our sales tax, we see a 2% decrease compared to May of '20. And we're looking at the commissioner of revenues data to get that information. If you look at the chart on page eight, that chart makes it appear like it's a much larger increase, and that's because we're showing that data net of any adjustments. But once we, so there was a large transfer back to another locality. However, it's about $130,000 less or 23.8% less compared to May of '19. And then, our historic sales tax was $94,000 more compared to May of '21, or May of '20, but 1.5% or $2,800 less than May of '19. So, the historic did a little bit better than our regular sales tax. And so, I would also like to point out, you know, I spoke a lot last year about a revenue and water being down due to consumption. And so, we do see in July an increase in our revenue of about $168,000, and that's related to an increase in consumption and commercial of about 30%, and we see an increase in the number of accounts, about 33 more accounts than we saw last year at this time. And in Sua, we see the same type of thing, but just to a lesser extent. I think we see three more new accounts in the, or I'm sorry, six accounts, and about a 13.3% increase in consumption, about $11,000 in revenue. And so, that concludes my report for July. And then, of course, in August, we'll be able to look at the revenue for the lodging and meals. It'll be September before we can really compare sales tax.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dameron?
I have none.
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. Monthly departmental operating reports?
Nothing to note.
I was going to have some questions, but with Wendy's approvals, can we wait until next month? Thank you.
City manager report, Mr. Trivitt?
None this month.
Shelton, city attorney?
Nothing today.
We have no unfinished business. Takes us to new business, which is, first item is consideration and adoption of resolution number 21-17, accepting FY22 State of Good Repair funds from VDOT. Mr. Small, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of city council, before you today is some more money we've been awarded from Commonwealth Transportation Board. This is part of the State of Good Repair program. I'd kind of gone through this program last March, where we received money for paving of primary streets. Last March was for South Henry Street as well as all of Jamestown Road from Lake Matoka out. This year, we've been awarded for FY22, another almost $300,000 to pave a section of Richmond Road between the north boundary of High Street, all the way down to New Hope Road, and including the rise of Bypass Road up to the Bridge Deck over the railroad. And so, that'll, this work would be scheduled for, as soon as we can get it done, hopefully in the spring of '22, but it may fall into the fall of next year. And with that, I ask that you accept the funds and request city manager to approve the paperwork to go along with it, and that is resolution 2117. Any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
No? I just like the word "more money" coming in, so...
All right. Is there a motion, please?
So, I move that city council approve resolution 21-17, accepting the funds and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the State of Good Repair program.
Second?
Mr. Trivitt, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
And Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Thank you. So, that takes us now to a presentation from Colonial Group Home Commission about the amended joint exercise of powers agreement. Mr. Fuller, welcome. Sorry to keep you waiting today.
Good afternoon, and thank you, because it got me out of another meeting. So, thank members of council, I just want to give you some real quick, I know that hour's late, a couple ideas. First, I'd be remiss, but I didn't thank Ms. Evans for all of her help and support on the Colonial Group Home Commission. So, really, we're here just because, as you know, in 2020, we closed Crossroads Group Home. The Colonial Group Home Commission has been around since 1985. Part of the charter and the statute that was created under was for a group home. So, with the closing of the group home, we need to actually commit this commission under a different statute. So, in looking at founding documents, we did that. There are really four changes in the document. First, because we're not going to be a group home anymore, we'd like to change the name, obviously, since it's not a group home, to the Colonial Juvenile Services Commission. Second thing that we're going to do is, when we redid the bylaws in 2018, at that time, the practice was, we didn't have, the commission had a judge on the commission, and the common practice was the judges hadn't been participating in about 15 years. So, we changed the commission bylaws to put the juvenile, or the court service unit on there. With the closing of Crossroads, the judge expressed his interest in being on the commission, so we're just adding that back. And really, the fourth thing is just to change and clear up the funding model. In 2018, we had put in a five-step program to change the funding model from when it was originally done based on census and population to utilization. So, we're now using a five-year rolling average of utilization, which is similar to other regional commissions in the area. So, really, those are the changes in the statute. So, really, I'm here just to present that and thank you all for all of your support over the years and answer any questions that you may have about the commission or this agreement.
Well, Mr. Fuller, thank you, and thank you for all the work that you do to support the members of the community, as you do. No easy feat, but the rewards are great, so we thank you for that. And this sounds like a matter of housekeeping.
Yes, it is.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. No questions.
Thanks, no.
No questions for me either.
I have none either. Thank you, Mr. Fuller, for your work.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you. There is a motion, though? I think we'll need to...
So, I move that city council adopt resolution 21-04.
Second?
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Yeah, so that takes us now to the reappointment of Nina Simone to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board Directors. Motion, sir?
Yes, we have two, actually. The judge reappointment. I move that city council reappoint Nina Simone to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Directors for a term to begin immediately and expire on June 30, 2025, and appoint Judge Holly Smith to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board for the length of the tenure in that position.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
I guess, I stopped reading that, but I see that now, about the judge. No disrespect, Ms. Smith. So that leaves us now with the final open forum. If there's anybody that'd like to come forward to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, other than Mr. Braxton's smile, I'll close the open forum. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.